Let me hear you now?
Now we could hear you, yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Catherine Galbuski, 278 52nd Street, Lindenhurst, New York, 11757.
Okay. For the record, we have Planning Division memorandum dated August 11, 2020. We have a survey by islandwide land surveyors dated April 28, 2016. We have a tax map as an area map and we have any pictures and four pictures. What would you like to tell us about this application, please?
We're requesting an in-ground pool.
I'll have to speak up.
We're requesting an in-ground pool.
Okay. And Nick is not here. Okay.
West Babylon, John.
Is it West Babylon?
Yes.
Okay, Tom, you want to take that?
Yeah. Is this your, your home or is the one in Lindenhurst your home?
Uh, we're going to be moving to the West Babylon home.
Oh, okay, good. I'm from West Babylon. Welcome.
Thank you. We love the area.
Other than that, I have no questions.
Okay. Anybody else on the board would like, uh, have any questions? For the record, they're on, on, will anybody else like to be heard on this application? For the record, they're on, on, we're going to hold the decision until, um, next week, okay, in case anybody would like to be heard on this application.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, next. Brian, we have Martin Villatoro.
No, I have, I have Lori and, uh, the applicant from number one, she came in a little late, so I'm gonna bring her in now.
Okay.
Lori, I'm bringing you in.
Where are you on that? Still muted?
Yeah, Lori, you're still muted, uh, but you, you're brought in now, so you're able to share.
Hi Lori.
Lori, you're still muted, though.
Hey Lori, can you unmute yourself, please?
Can I have her?
Hello? Lori, can you hear us?
It looks like she might be having some internet issues. Lori, you're lagging a little bit, so, uh, my suggestion would be to get closer. Oh, I lost it.
Uh. Okay.
All right, you want to move, you want to move forward to number three and then we'll go back?
We could do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see her in, so we'll go back.
Okay.
All right. We have application number 20-083, Martin Villatoro. Martin, I'm gonna bring you in and, uh, Chris or Harold, you should be there as well. Uh, Martin? All right. Uh, maybe Galaxy Note could be them. Let's give it a shot. Galaxy Note? Who's that?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Is, who is this?
Yep.
This is Lori.
All right, Lori, let's, let's, let's go back to Lori then.
Go back to Lori.
I'm sorry, you're labeled just Galaxy Note, so I, I did not know who this was, so.
Oh, yes, matter of fact, I've been on since quarter to six.
Okay.
So I apologize.
Is it Lester again?
No, no, no.
He's over there again.
We lost you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I don't know.
Lori.
Oh, okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Just get this back up, this is number one. Okay. Good evening Lori, can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Lori Idalusha, 207 Kellum Street, West Babylon, New York, 11704.
Okay, thank you. For the record, we have a Planning Division memo dated August 11, 2020. We have a survey by Peter J. Brabazon dated April 14, 1981. And we have a tax map as an area map. And what would you like to tell us about the, do we have any pictures, Brian?
More pictures.
Okay, uh, what would you like to tell us about this application?
Um, this is the last of, um, the certificate of occupancy. The house is going to closing in two weeks. And the deck that was built in the missing back corner of the house, it just kind of fills out the house, it's in line with the house, both the side and the back. And it's about, I guess, 22 inches too close to the, to the fence. Hence the reason for the application.
Okay, I'll turn this meeting, this hearing over to, uh, Tom Winecheck.
Thank you. Okay, so it's right in line, I see it, it's, it's hatched on the survey. Uh, it's right in line with the existing house. How long is it?
I'm sorry?
How long has the deck been there?
Um, my husband put the deck on, um, a couple of years or right before he passed away, but I couldn't tell you the year, to be honest.
Okay.
I only found out the deck was an issue when we went to go sell the house.
Yeah, of course, that happened.
Surprise.
Okay, um, would you agree not to enclose the deck?
Um, I'm not enclosing it and I do believe that the new owners as well are extremely thrilled with the way that it is, so they're not enclosing it either.
Okay, well, if you agree to it, they're, they're bound to it also.
Then I agree.
Okay. I have no further question.
Would anybody else like to be heard on this application? For the record, they're on, on, do we have any questions from the board members? Okay. We're gonna hold this, uh, application open for one week in case anyone would like to be heard on this application and we'll notify you in the mail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Nice.
Bye now.
Okay. Go back to number three?
Yep. Unfortunately, it looks like, uh, they ran off, so we'll go back to them.
Okay.
I had a 226 number, that's who I was looking for. Um, so let's move on to number four.
Four, okay.
Okay.
Number four is Mets Roll-Off Service and Thomas Gore, I'm gonna be bringing you in.
Wheatley Heights is Tom or Dolores?
No, West Babylon. Can you guys hear me okay?
That's West Babylon.
How are you? I'm Thomas Gore, the architect for the project, 60 Carlton Avenue, Suite 202, Isop Terrace, New York.
Yeah.
117.
Okay. Um, for the record, we have a survey by William Simmons dated 10/4/2019. Uh, an area map as as a, a tax map as an area map and a Planning Division memorandum uh, dated August 11th to 2020. What would you like to tell us about this application?
Also, Mr. Chairman, also four pictures and a site plan by Thomas Gore dated, uh, July 19th, uh, 2020.
Thank you, Brian.
Good evening. It's an existing vacant lot, um, 75 by 100. We're looking to propose a new two-story, single-family residence. Um, we meet all aspects of zoning as far as setbacks, um, building area. However, this existing lot is deficient in width. It's a 75-foot lot instead of the required 80 feet. And it's also deficient in lot area. It's 7,500 square feet instead of the required 10,000 square feet. There seem to be, uh, many similar lots and houses in there, in fact, directly across the street. Um, I believe was constructed in 2007. I'm not sure if they went for a variance, but it's the same 75-foot width lot. And if you look within the 500-foot radius, there's approximately another lots that have a similar lot width or lot area. And again, we're not asking for any other relief other than the lot width and lot size. We're not looking to build this house, you know, too close to the sides or overbuilding area.
Okay, um, have you received the Planning Board memorandum um, with the covenants and restrictions and conditions?
Um, from August 11th, you said?
From August 11th, yes.
That I did not receive it.
Okay. Um, there are covenants, restrictions, um, about owner occupied, no accessory apartment and a number of conditions and covenants and restrictions for the, that are normal for the building and construction of this home. Um, I'm sure we'll get a copy of it to you and we can do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and we have to ask if there's anyone that would like to be heard on this application? For the record, they're on, on, would any of the board members have any questions on this? For the record, they're on, on, we're gonna hold this decision open until next week in case anybody would like to be heard on this application and we'll get a decision to you in the mail. We'll also get those covenants and restrictions out to you. Or even contact the Planning Board, okay?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, I do have, um, Chris in from Harold's office for number three, so if you're okay with it, we can go back to number three.
All righty, we'll go back to number three.
Hello?
Okay.
How are yous?
Hey, Chris. Can you give us your name and, and address for the record, please?
My name is Chris Alvino, I work for Harold Gebhardt, 363 North Wellwood Avenue, Lindenhurst, Architect.
Okay, this is application number 20083. For the record, we have a Planning Division memorandum dated August 11th, 2020. We have a survey from Ferranello, Ferrantello Land Surveys dated 8 to 2019. We have a tax map as an area map and
and five pictures, Mr. Chairman, and all, uh, and a site plan by Harold Gebhardt dated, uh, March 30th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Chris, what would you like to tell us about this application?
This is a, a little front portico, he'd like to put a little reverse gable over his front door. He's never gonna enclose it. It's just so when he's, you know, getting into the house, he's covered from the weather, you know, just a simple gable over the front door. Hopefully, this is the last thing we do here on this property. I think it is.
Okay, I'm gonna turn the hearing over to Dolores, one time.
Okay, um, I don't really have a lot of questions. Um, what he's asking for is, is okay. I just want him to know it's, um, the condition that the front porch, front porch not to be further enclosed.
No, would not be further, it will never be enclosed.
That's agreed upon, okay. Um, I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody like to be heard on this application? For the record, they're on, on, would any of the board members have any questions for this application? For the record, they're, they're on, on, Chris, we're gonna hold this application open for one week in case anybody would like to comment on it and we'll give you a decision in the mail.
Thank you very much, have a great weekend. See you later, Kate, have a great weekend, Kate.
Take care, Chris.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna bring in, uh, the applicant for number five, which is the applicant Anita and Representative Joseph Gabriel.
Okay, let me see, number three. Number five. Okay. Good evening, application number 20084. Anita, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can I have your name and address for you, for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, my name is Anita Paredes, 143 Seaman Neck Road, Dix Hills, New York, 11746.
Okay. We, for the record, we have a Planning Division memorandum dated August 11th, 2020. We have a survey by LASSA, LASSA's Land Survey dated April 11th, 2020. We have a tax map as an area map and
and four pictures and a site plan by Joseph Gabriel, Architect, dated March 11th, 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Anita. Is Joseph supposed to be joining us? I have him written down, but I don't, I don't see him. Is there someone else from his office I should be looking for? I have an Emily and a Kenny here.
Is there a Kristen, maybe?
No. Just I know that you had someone written down here as your
Yeah, they were supposed to be on
You want me to let me give them a call?
Do you like us to postpone on this?
I have them written down here.
As you want to continue?
I actually did speak with someone from their office, uh, earlier today, so I know that they're available.
Well, we have the applicant and we've called the meeting, so I believe we're, we can proceed.
Okay.
Okay. Um, if we're going to do that, Anita, what would you like to tell us about this application?
Well, I'm just trying to build a single-family home in Wyandance. Um, the lot, I think, is a 7,500 square foot. And typically, um, I know it's allowed, only 10,000 square foot is allowed unless you get a variance. So, we're trying to get a variance to build on the 7,500 square foot lot.
Oh, Emily. Oh, I have Emily here, perfect.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Anita.
Hello, Emily? Oh. Sorry, you need to unmute yourself?
Yes, sorry, it's, it's not Emily. My granddaughter used this for her Girl Scout meeting, it didn't. Uh, I'm Joseph Gabriel and, uh, Architect for the applicant.
Name and address for the record, please?
4250 Veterans Highway, Old Brook, New York.
Thank you. What would you like to add to, uh, this application?
Well, we have a 75-foot lot, which is smaller than the required 80, 80 feet. And, um, the, the lot area is 7,500 as opposed to the required 10,000. Uh, what we were asking to do was to diminish the front yard, to provide a larger rear yard. And I see in the planning memorandum that, that, that the, uh, that the, uh, planning staff would like us to move the building back. I believe it's four feet to accommodate the front yard and I don't think there's any problem in doing that. Anita, I don't think you have any issue with it. So we'll, we'll move the, um, the building back to the four feet, so item number three can come off the list. So we were basically asking to build a one-family house on a, on an undersized lot. There are plenty of lots like this in, in the area. And we'd ask that we, uh, get this approved so that we can move on and build this building.
Okay. Um, do you agree, um, on the covenants and restrictions? Have you read the covenants and restrictions in the, uh, planning memorandum?
I have. I don't see, I don't see anything there that would be, uh, an obstacle to approving this.
Okay. Uh, no accessory apartments whatsoever for the whole lifetime and they must be owner occupied, correct? That's one of the covenants and restrictions.
Right, we saw that.
Okay, very good. Um, Pam, do we need to, uh, make a motion to strike, um, variance number three?
To amend, yes.
I would like to make a motion to strike variance number three and add that they, and then we need a new set of plans to move the house back, Kate?
Uh, we need a new, uh, survey.
We need a new site plan.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have to get the survey modified.
Okay, so we need a new survey, a new set of, another site plan? And, um, make a motion.
I'll second John's motion.
Okay, thanks, John.
And then there's someone, like, uh, wishing to speak on the
Say again, Brian?
There's someone wanted to speak on this application.
Okay.
Speak.
Um, so we need, second on that, on the number three, we got that from John. Okay, would anybody else like to be heard on this application? Say, can you?
Yeah.
Hi.
Yes, hi.
Yes.
Hi, yeah, hi, good evening. I have some questions regarding this house. I live, um, in
Okay, for a minute, can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Michelle Lewis, 91 Brooklyn Avenue in Wyandance.
Okay, and what would you like to add about this application, application number 20084?
Um, I just feel, I'm just trying to wonder if it's, um, supposed to be 10,000 feet and they're trying to do, um, 7,500 and they're gonna have, um, six bedrooms, I believe, and I, I'm not sure about the bedrooms. I think it's of six, um, bedrooms and supposed to be a one-family house. I'm kind of concerned about that. They were now saying that they want to move the house back four feet and I'm also concerned about the parking. There's a school across the street, a high school across the street and I want to know if they have like six bedrooms, are they gonna plan on renting the rooms out? Are they, uh, as far as the basement goes, is the basement gonna have windows? Is there gonna be an exit from the house in the, in the, to the basement? That they can possibly have another apartment in there? Um, I'm just trying to figure out this, this, this gigantic house in this area. Um, I'm not sure how many houses are like this, but I think it's, the house is too big for the area.
Okay, well, the, part of the, um, covenants and restrictions for this home is that it has to be owner occupied only and there are no accessory apartments whatsoever. Um, Joe, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, but
Yes, yes, I would. Uh, you talk about windows in the basement in an apartment. The basement is planned as storage, there's no escape windows being installed. It is simply a storage area.
Is there gonna be, is there gonna be stairs leading down to the basement from the house outside?
I think, no, not outside, inside. All the stairs are inside.
Okay. Um,
What about, what about garages?
All right, we can have a cross-conversation here, he has to answer the questions and
I thought he did, I'm sorry, sir.
All righty. Um,
What was your other question? Uh, the stairs are all in the house, that was the last response.
Okay, with inside. And, and the parking, is it a two-car garage? I haven't seen the site plan.
Uh, the parking was a, uh, one-car garage and the, and the apron would be the second and possibly third car.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any more questions? Young, uh,
John?
Yeah.
John, there's no garage and it's, a proposed driveway is 20 feet wide by 28 feet deep.
If that, that'll change by four feet.
Yeah, it'll change by four feet, it'll be four, go back to the four feet.
So once we see a new site plan and a new survey, that'll all change also, correct, for parking?
It'll become the 32 feet and we'll, uh, we'll indicate the parking spaces on the garage as proposed.
Are you with the garage?
Okay.
There is no garage.
All right.
No garage.
There was no garage.
I thought you just said there was a one-car garage.
No, there's no garage. I apologize.
All right.
Okay.
No.
Yeah.
All right, are there any other questions about this application?
Yeah, also, sorry, wait.
Okay, go right ahead.
Question.
Okay, would anyone else like to be heard on this application?
Well, I have one other, another question. Um, it's gonna be 200 feet for my property, so is it 200 feet from the property line? How is this, um, how do they measure that? Cause it says it's gonna be 200, 200 feet. So that's 200 feet from my property?
From your property line. I would have to see the survey to see that. We're gonna get a revised survey and, um, you could contact the, uh, Building Department or Planning Division and they, they could give you more information on that.
Yeah, but my main concern is like the parking, if they're gonna have like six bedrooms, where's all this parking gonna go? It's, we're gonna be parking on the street, I mean, we have kids, a high school right across the street, not that many, I, even 200 feet from the, the house. I mean, the house is
We're gonna have to address that at a different time when we get the site plan and the new survey. Okay, and that'll be addressed and you could contact the Building Department and get that information.
Okay.
Before it's approved, okay?
All right, thank you so much.
All right.
John. John. A statement to the, the person who's raising the questions.
Okay, we're losing. We lost you, Joe.
Oh.
I also have a problem with them saying that, um, in the proposal that it wasn't gonna be, it was, it wasn't gonna be a garage and now he's the architect and he's doing it and now he's proposing that.
Well, this is not a cross-conversation, man, we need to, you had your opportunity to speak and we, we're going to address the concerns.
Thank you.
Planning.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, um, is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this application? For the record, they're on, on.
Thank you.
We lost Joe. Um, we're gonna hold this hearing open until, um, we receive the new site plan and a new, um, survey. Okay, and, uh, they'll address it at the Building Department.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Okay. Brian, you closing that application out?
Yep, yep, that's good. Uh, I mean, I'm gonna put, bring you back as an attendee, thank you. Um, and we have we have Ms. Blanda for number seven.
I think it's six, Brian.
Number six.
Number six.
Yeah, I'm number six.
Okay. Okay, hi Nicole. We have your name.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Nicole Blanda, I'm an attorney at Bizel Blanda and Viscanti with offices at 535 Broad Hollow Road in Melbourne.
Okay. For the record, we have a planning memorandum, uh, dated August 11th, 2020. We have a survey by William Simmons dated 2/23/20. We have a site plan by JFT Architectural, uh, dated 4/11/2020. We have a tax map as an area map and Brian?
And four pictures.
Okay. Nicole, what would you like to tell us about this application?
Um, here on behalf of the property owner, uh, the Telemakis, they are looking to put a second-story addition on an existing home. Um, staying within the footprint so that the, some of the variances are actually existing conditions. Um, the front yard setback, we're looking to reduce from 40 feet to 28. The existing dwelling, though, is at 30 feet. Uh, the house was built in 1951, so the two, the further two-foot encroachment is due to the second story having a cantilever over the first floor. Um, the west side yard, we're looking to, uh, maintain, uh, 15 to 14.5 and then our total side yard is 35 to 31. Those are both existing conditions. We're literally putting the second story, uh, straight up. Um, and then there's also an existing deck. I know that my client purchased in 2013, she said the deck was there when she purchased it, she would like to keep it. I see that planning has asked that it not be enclosed and they're fine with that. Um, I can screen share if you'd like, but I, I did hear Pam say that you guys were trying to move things along. Um, I can screen share if you'd like, but I, I did hear Pam say that you guys were trying to move things along tonight, so if it's not necessary, I won't.
Okay, anybody?
I'd like that.
Anybody, um, Tom, I'll turn this over to you, Tom.
Okay, thank you. You pretty much answered all my questions, Nicole.
That makes me happy, Tom.
I think, uh, it could be an improvement, so.
It's a, it's a very pretty elevation, if you look at the elevation, it is a very attractive home.
We don't have that, but I, I certainly believe you, so.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
There is a condition recommended by planning.
Yes, I saw that, the front porch?
Not be further enclosed.
No closure of the front porch, yeah.
Okay, would anybody else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Any of the board members have any questions, additional questions? For the record, there are none. Okay, we're going to reserve the decision for one week in case anybody would like to be heard, Nicole, and we'll give you a decision in the mail.
Okay, thank you so much, have a good night, have a good weekend.
Hey, good night.
Bye.
Okay, number seven?
Yeah, number seven?
You with us, Brian?
Oh, yeah. There we go.
There we go. Hi, Mr. Chairman, evening.
Okay, Steve Kretz is in on, Steve, how are you?
He's very good, sir. Um.
Can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Stephen Kretz, Dunne U. Kretzen Garrett, six ninety-two South Wellwood Avenue, Lindenhurst, for the applicant, Parkway Village Estates LLC.
Okay, for the record, we have a planning division memorandum dated August eleventh, twenty twenty. We have a survey by F C Watson Land Surveyors dated, what was the date on this? Uh, June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. We have a tax map as an area map, and Brian?
And four pictures, as well as a site plan dated, uh, three nine twenty by Harold D. Getmore.
Okay. Steve, what would you like to tell us about this application?
This project is substantially near to completion. The, the work, the buildings are there, the, the models are in, the parking lot, I think, is poured. I know all the drainage and, uh, underground work that needs to be done is done. The outside, uh, finish is done. It, it looks like it's very close. And, um, and a conversation ensued between Mr. Curcio, I think, who is the manager of the LLC, and the superintendent of the school next door, um, on the north, which is to the north side of this project. And the conversation got around to, I, you know, I think that fence could be a little higher. We had proposed a six-foot fence, which was approved by the board, the, the whole plan, of course, has been approved. And Mr. Curcio said, well, I'd be happy if, if it would help you, if you think, to raise it to eight feet, but we have to get permission from the town, and that's what we're here about. It was generated by the, uh, the request by the, the school, and he's willing to do it.
Okay, I'll turn the, uh, hearing over to Mr. John Shepherd.
Hi, Steve, so this makes the school happy?
Apparently so, John, yes.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Would anybody else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
No, Mr. Chairman, there is one person, I'm just working on getting them on the line, I apologize, uh, they should have been in, but, one sec.
You know, all of the, all of the other hearings that I've done this way went a little bit more smoothly than tonight's did, but, uh, you, you pulled it off, so it worked out. Yeah. And I only, I don't mean with respect to the content of any of the presentations or responses, just the, uh, the electronics, let's say.
Technical difficulties.
Technical difficulties, yes.
Hi, I was just disconnected for a while, so I'm not sure where we are.
We're on, okay, number seven.
Thank you.
Someone to be heard on this application.
Oh, phew, I wasn't sure what happened there. Okay.
Any luck, Brian?
We're good, she's fine, she did not want to speak.
She's not going to speak?
Nope, nope, she, she buzzed on YouTube and had no question.
Okay, so there's no other questions? Would any of the board members like to have any questions on this application?
No.
For the record, there are none. We're going to hold the hearing open until, for one week, and in case anyone would like to be heard, and we'll send you, uh, the decision in the mail, Steve.
Thank you very much, everybody, have a nice evening.
Okay, thanks, everyone, so we have a little bit of a time crunch. Um, let's go right to last week's hearing. The first item is twenty dash zero seven nine Ronald Clyburn. The property is in Wheatley Heights. There was a condition that the sunroom not be heated.
What page was the?
It was last week's, so that now we're looking at last week's agenda. Yes. Twenty zero seven nine, and the property is in Wheatley Heights.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve application twenty dash zero seven nine with the condition that the sunroom not be heated.
Second.
All in favor?
Pam, I wasn't, I wasn't here.
Thank you. Moving on to twenty dash zero seven six Natali Cardino. This property is located in Copec. It was for the erection of an in-ground pool, there were no conditions recommended.
Ricky's not here. I'll make a motion, we approve application two zero zero seven six as, um, just approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And John, you're abstaining, I understand.
Right, yep.
Thank you. Moving on to twenty dash zero seven eight Louis DeMarco. This property is located in Lindenhurst. Um, there was a neighbor who was supporting the application, there are no objections or conditions recommended. Sorry?
Didn't hear you.
Did you need the repeat?
Okay, anyone have a, have a response to this or anything? Anything to say on this application? No? Okay, I'm going to make. What's that? I'm going to make a motion to approve application two zero zero seven eight.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you, moving on to two zero, uh, zero eight one Christopher Choffey. This property is located in Farmingdale. The recommended condition was that if it was approved, the front porch was not to be further enclosed.
Okay, I make a motion to approve application two zero zero eight one with the condition on the front of the C O that the porch not be further enclosed.
Second.
All in favor?
On me.
Aye.
Thank you.
And moving on to twenty dash zero eight zero, this is two nine eight twenty-eighth Street LLC. The property is located in Copec. This is subject to C N Rs if approved.
Okay, and this is Copec. Make a motion, we approve application two zero zero eight zero with the covenants, subject to covenants and restrictions, restrictions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Moving on to twenty dash zero eight two Nob Hill Apartments. Uh, there was, there was no additional, um, construction associated with this, and there are no recommended conditions. This property is located in North Babylon.
This one needs a negative declaration.
Okay, and make a motion, uh, for a negative declaration on application two zero zero eight two.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Never needed a motion.
John, were you here for this?
No, I was not, I was gone last week.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve application number two zero zero eight two.
Second.
With no conditions, thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, um, we can just move through, I'm not sure what else needs to be voted on, let's just go through the rest of the agenda. P and P Motors remains reserved, V L ten remains reserved, Basilico Materials remains reserved, Jane J. Wanjari Christie Smoke Shop remains reserved. I believe there was one piece of correspondence, but we weren't able to put it on for, um, today. We can remove affordable Car Guru as it's going to need major renovations. They did not request outdoor storage, so that will be removed from the agenda until those renovations are made. So, if we can, can we please approve the minutes of July sixteenth and July thirtieth?
I'll make a motion.
July, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a second for July sixteenth?
Second, sorry.
It's okay. And then the minutes of July thirtieth.
We're breaking up here, it's, uh, difficult.
Motion, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, there were minutes sent to you from last week, August sixth, they were sent under some cover. They are for review only, and, um, with that, I believe we can adjourn.
And make a motion to adjourn.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all, thank you for your commentations and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I know.
Good job, John, have a good night.
Mickey, okay?
Aye.
I don't know, we didn't hear from.
Unable to, to, to get on the meeting.
Okay.
This is a rough one with the internet, they're breaking up like crazy.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.